Called to order this Pierce County Council meeting in our Tuesday study session. It is Tuesday, September 24th, 2024. The time is 12:01 PM. All members are present except for Vice Chair Campbell, who is excused. Item number two, excuse me, all members are present. Item number two is review of today's council meeting agenda. Ms. Long, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you. This is your regular meeting scheduled for this afternoon's regular meeting. It is amended. We did review the consent agenda yesterday. There are no changes. However, I'm just going to remind you of the one appointment for final action that, and we'll have language for you for this afternoon. But there will be a request to remove our 2024-208 from the consent agenda and place in section eight. And then the motion, since there was a request to withdraw from the executive, we talked about this before, but the motion will be kind of a two-parter. So it'll be a motion to allow the withdrawal, if that's what you desire, and to approve our 2024-208 thereby confirming the appointment of the other appointee. So we'll have that language for you this afternoon. It's just a little different.
Okay. Can you pause, Ms. Long?
I just want to follow up on that one, since you were just bringing it up and apologize. Wasn't here yesterday for all of it. But as I understand it, there was an error on the executive side in who they were sending forth, and they didn't have the right credentials. They weren't immigrant or refugee status. And so they're being withdrawn because that's a requirement of the committee.
So the code provides that that particular committee has nine members, one from each of the seven council districts and two at large. One of those at large has to be a youth. And then later in the code, it says there must be, there must be a majority of immigrants and/or refugees on the board. So while the individual wasn't disqualified or because of the district status or the at-large status, it was because appointing that person at that point, given the other vacancies, would put the majority of members, it would make the minority, the immigrants and refugees, contrary to the code language. Does that make sense?
It does. I was just trying to, just want to make sure this was, was this something the Executive's Office was unaware of? And, you know, how did it? Because that's something that I believe has been in the code since it was created. So I'm just curious how it was missed and got this far that someone was sent a letter that they would be appointed and then now we're in the position of pulling it back.
Right. I don't know how it came to be. Councilmember Denson might have more information on that. But as we were looking at this earlier, it isn't clear when you look at the membership lists, whether the members are immigrants or refugees or not. And so it's, there's no indication anywhere that we can find.
Okay. But this is, comes from the Executive's Office, asks us, pull us back, withdraw it, fix it. Okay. So happy to assist the Executive's Office with assisting this, with fixing this issue.
Thank you. Councilmember Denson?
Yeah, I just want to add a little bit, but not too much context. There's been a lot of discussion from my office around this. No one did anything wrong. The Executive's Office did not do anything wrong. The candidate is excellent. She wants to serve. She's excited to be reconsidered in the future. But everybody's on the same page. Everybody has agreed that this is the best way to proceed at this point. So I think we're all good here, and I look forward to putting her name forward in the future. But she's absolutely respectful of the makeup of the committee. And so that's, that's what's been discussed. Thanks.
Thank you. And Councilmember Hitchens had a good example. And Ms. Long and Mr. Taylor, we're going to rely on you to follow up with the Chief of Staff in the Executive's Office in this regard about how to update the, you know, the application that members of the public use to apply for consideration for appointment to Board and Commission and what the executive sees, what the council sees, so that for the myriad of boards and commissions where there is some sort of requirement for their status of some kind, residency or background, or, you know, you know, you know what we mean, that it's able to be really clear to the reader, no matter who the, no matter who the reader is. And so we're going to rely on you to follow up with the, with executive staff for us to see how we can improve the form. Councilmember Morell?
Thank you. And there again, I wasn't in the discussion on this. And I think Councilmember Denson does bring up a good point. The person is well qualified and is actively working within that community. Is that committee fault? I mean, you mentioned that it was nine members.
Right.
Is, is there seven members? And then if this person was appointed, it would throw off the mix? Or how is that?
I think there are still two vacancies. We can double check on that. But I think there are two vacancies even after the appointment today.
So if there was only one vacancy, would this person qualify? If the other positions were filled up with first generation immigrants?
Well, if there were six members, well, three wouldn't count for, there were three, that's not a majority. If it's only, if there are only six.
So of those three positions, are those three positions already taken?
There'd be three, well, two existing. And then if this one's withdrawn, I believe that would leave three vacancies. I'll confirm that with the executive. So yeah, there's, there's a possibility that that majority could switch with the new appointments, allowing her to be reconsidered.
Yeah. I mean, we struggle to fill up these committees anyway. And I hate to turn back people that are well qualified and they just don't cut the ratio. And I, you know, there again, I haven't been intimately involved with this particular setting up this committee. But most committees, I guess, don't have that much criteria on who serves in those committees. So I'm curious to see how this came about. Because I don't remember, maybe, I think it was Councilmember Campbell's. Did you set this committee up?
Indeed, I did.
And was that your intent in setting it up?
That we would have representation from people who are first gen, first generation immigrant or current refugee status to help guide us in the policies. I mean, there's lots of qualified people to opinion on lots of our committees from various points of view. At the end of the day, we try to get people with, great matched, either lived experience or professional experience. And so I think that the intent there, much like some of our more technical boards, we like to put engineers and other professionals on for that. In this case, the lived experience of being a recent immigrant or refugee would best advise us on our current policies around refugees and immigrants. I believe that was, there was something that myself and former members, Iger, if you remember, we worked together on it. And so I want to acknowledge his input also on helping us create this.
Right. I know, I knew it was a long time ago. And, you know, I think District One, we're making an appointment this afternoon on District Ones. So I would hope that everything's okay.
Okay. I have confidence we're going in the right direction. And I do see, I just got some follow-up information from the Executive's Office on this that I haven't read thoroughly through, but I think helps explain where we're at and where we're moving forward on this.
Councilmember Hoover?
Thank you, Chair. Nothing new to add.
Ms. Long, can you continue briefing on today's regular meeting?
Yes. Okay. We are now on section seven. There is one proclamation this afternoon, and that is proclaiming September 2024 as Service Dog Awareness Month in Pierce County. And that was requested by Councilmember Morell. There are no, well, we'll move the one resolution. So moving to section nine ordinances, you have one item here, and that is O2024-546. This is establishing a prohibition on the use of compression brakes along Waller Road East in the Mid-County Community Plan and Creveson Drive Northwest in the Key Peninsula Community Plan area. This received a due pass at EIDC on September 10th. And those are your agenda items for this afternoon's meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Long. And for especially members who were not available yesterday, we have a recognition under other items on the consent agenda. This was previously on the regular agenda under section seven. These individuals are simply not available to attend our meeting today. So Councilmember Herrera is arranging another opportunity to recognize the South Hill Little League players and coaches for their performance in the 2024 Little League World Series. And so we'll be approving the language in consent agenda and Councilmember Hoover will be, excuse me, Councilmember Herrera will be representing us and taking that recognition at a place that works for the players and coaches. Any other questions about today's regular meeting agenda? Not seeing any word. Item number three, external boards and commissions. Mr. Taylor, to begin the discussion?
All right. Good afternoon. Just one item for the Puget Sound Regional Council this week. That is the Executive Board meeting on September the 26th at the regular time of 10:00 AM. There are three items for discussion. I think I touched on these at a prior study session. The first is a discussion regarding PSRC's recommendations to the state legislature for 2025. Essentially, their legislative agenda for the next legislative session will be discussed by the Executive Board. Also be a presentation regarding information from the Housing Research Center. I don't have the details on that. I will look into it a little bit further and forward that information to any, any member that's interested in the content. And then the last item, which I know I briefed previously, was regarding the regional transportation plan. That plan is updated approximately every three years by PSRC. It's a significant body of work for the PSRC. And so right now, the PSRC is working on the scope of that update. And so they're going to talk about how that scope's been developed at the Executive Board. So that's what I have to report out on for this week's PSRC meetings.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Thank you. Do any other members have other external boards and commission updates? Councilmember Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. You may be bringing up the LSC portion of the WASAC meeting, but the WASAC Board met last week, continued to have really good conversation around WASAC going forward and some of the changes that we're looking at, the work that has continued on the bylaws development to make sure that there's value added to the work that we're doing for Pierce County residents who pay. We, as a county, pay a lot more just due to the population, but per person, we pay less. So there's, there's that continued, we'll call it debate. And so we continue to have that conversation, but it was a really succinct meeting. And they did note there are some committees and board appointments that had openings. If there's something that you're interested in doing at a statewide level, they send out those regular little announcements that you can say yes to. I'm not allowed to say yes to anything else. But the rest of you, if there's something that you're interested in or passionate about, there's often opportunities. And we are a lot closer to Olympian, the majority meet over Zoom these days. So if there's something of interest, please take a look at those emails. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens. Other members have any other external boards and commission updates?
I'd say one is, Councilmember Hitchens indicated I participated in the Legislative Steering Committee of our State Association last week. And the Legislative Steering Committee continues to advance seven legislative priorities for the upcoming 2025 legislative session. So we, in the midst of a fire drill here in this building, I was here, folks were in Eastern Washington or Central Washington somewhere, I had to stay back. And we had the fun of a fire drill in the middle of the meeting. But we did discuss for many hours, seven different legislative priorities for the State Association to lead on. The first is new county revenue, especially for the purposes of public safety and the criminal justice system. The second is funding indigent or public defense. The third, which doesn't apply to us, but it has to do with county coroners of really small-sized counties. The fourth is related to the citing of renewable energy projects. The fifth item is around accountability in the behavioral health continuum of services by improving contractual standards for behavioral health services in counties. The sixth priority is around county housing access and affordability. And the seventh is around preservation and maintenance funding for the county transportation system, as we are hearing a lot of significant discussion about another transportation funding package and wanting to make sure that county interests are well represented and understood when debating a transportation package. So those are the seven policy initiatives that the Legislative Steering Committee gave the go-ahead to further fine-tune. And we had extensive dialogue about each and every one of these and gave extensive comment on all of them. So a lot more to come with detailed one-pagers on all of them and future work. I don't have anything to add under Chair's topics. And so we're at item number five, other business. We'll begin with our Communications Manager and Public Information Officer updates. Mr. Dominique, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council. I have nothing to share with you today, but I am available to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Dominique? Thank you. We know you're hard at work on our behalf. And doing multiple people's jobs at once. Okay. We are going to be receiving our second and last presentation from our summer council intern today. I'm going to invite Mike Kruger and Carrie Waterland to the podium to help introduce Mina Hasani, our other council intern. We had the benefit of hearing from Tyler yesterday about his project related to council priorities and measuring outcomes about council priorities. He did an excellent job, Tyler. And we have our second and final council presentation today. Ms. Waterland, Ms. Kruger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Carrie and I are up here today to introduce Mina Hasani, who is our intern. We're very pleased that we actually do have something to share, unlike our communications manager over here. So, you know, we were handed a task of putting together a work program for an intern. We had decided to bring on a couple of interns this summer. We initially thought that one of those interns would work on the comprehensive plan, periodic update, with all that volume of work that was coming. But then we met Mina, we recognized her, her experience, her background. And, and we both felt that looking at these equity notes and kind of the disparity between some of the notes that seemed like they were just kind of being filled out to check a box and be done, and others that were quite comprehensive, we just saw this huge range of work that was being done in the equity notes, and some were more valuable than others. And so we asked Mina if she'd be interested in tackling that, and she readily agreed. And I don't think, I can understate how pleased we are with her work. It's an excellent report, and so we're really excited to share it with you. And Carrie, do you have anything to add?
Absolutely. The only thing to add is I think that you'll hear, as Mina is going through her presentation, an underlying dedication to really providing something that's useful to all of you, because she's acknowledged and had an opportunity to talk with all policy staff and really get to know us, that the policies that you make, the laws that you make, can impact and do impact folks who live in Pierce County. And she will present you with some recommendations and thoughts about how to make those more useful, and also how to really get to what it is that the council wanted to know about the policies and the laws that you're passing and how those impact folks. So again, to echo Mike, Mina came in with a lot of energy, a lot of spirit, and a lot of dedication, and we think that you're going to see that in her presentation today.
Thank you. Well, thank you to both of you for your mentorship and supervision of Mina. We know you did a great job of supporting her during this experience. So thank you to you both. Mina, we're excited to hear from you.
Thank you for having me here today. My name is Mina Hasani, and I will be presenting my equity note review and recommendations. I first want to give a huge thank you to the HR team, and in particular, Chrisa Hudson, for making this opportunity possible for me and my peers. I can truly say I'm going to echo what Tyler said yesterday. This has been a life-changing experience. I know it sounds maybe a little dramatic, but it, I'm completely serious. I've had the time of my life this summer. And I want to thank Mike Kruger and Carrie Waterland for their mentorship. They have been so supportive, and I feel so grateful that they trusted me with this project and led me to what I hope will be some helpful recommendations. I also want to thank the policy team for being there for me and readily answering my questions, helping me learn. I learned so much just from sitting in a cubicle next to them. All right. So to get into my presentation, I was tasked with reviewing the equity note process and making recommendations for improvement. I wanted to give a little definition of equity as provided by Pierce County through the resources that they give to staff in the creation of equity notes. They say that equity is achieved when all people, regardless of race, gender, income, or any other factors, have access to the resources and opportunities that improve their quality of life. And this will then contribute to vibrant communities and strong outcomes where we can be supported by our government. Next slide, please. To get into how I approached this project, I started by trying to get a strong background on the creation of equity notes. What were your goals when you created them? What legislation underwrote this process? So studying in particular R2021-108S-109 and O2023-2, I studied how the council directed the creation of work groups, the creation of the Equity Index, an Equity Committee, and all of these sorts of areas of reflection for the county to go over what existing policies we have and how they can be improved to better serve the residents of Pierce County. While I was watching these committee hearings in the Public Safety Committee on DEI in Pierce County with presentations from other jurisdictions, a commonly cited source was GARE, the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. And this is an organization that provides equity frameworks and general ideas for transforming government and operationalizing equity in the creation of policy development. So having GARE as this resource allows governments to connect with one another and share ideas for best practices for implementing these policies. This was what largely directed my review of external research, looking at other jurisdictions that the Government Alliance on Race and Equity promoted as good examples. For internal research, I interviewed department staff, and this included representatives from Planning and Public Works, Finance, Human Services, and Parks and Recreation. I interviewed you, the council members, and I interviewed the policy staff. And I was able to ask everyone what they thought about the process, reflecting on it in the year since implementation. What are they gaining from it? What do they value? What are the potential shortcomings? Do they have recommendations themselves that I can be expanding on? So then, once I felt like I had this strong background on what people within Pierce County thought about this process, I was able to continue studying these other jurisdictions that we might look to for inspiration and see if they had any practices that might be able to address these concerns. As a result, I was able to develop these recommendations to ideally improve the quality of analysis that you see in the equity note. Next slide, please. So when it comes to staff feedback, I will say that the staff find equity notes valuable for the transparency and accountability that they bring to government work. In democratic government, these are vital values. We need to make sure that the residents of Pierce County trust us and that they can see that we have their best interests in mind when we are creating policy. These equity notes are available to the public. If you're watching a council meeting, you're able to access the legislation and the equity note accompanying it. And they can read the thought process going behind all of these policy choices and hopefully have faith that we have done them a service. Another piece of feedback, I will say this is the phrase of the project, is box-checking exercise. Pretty much everyone I talked to identified a pattern of equity notes just being a form that people fill out at the end, once they've already done all of their policy development and stakeholder engagement. It's just a note that they tick to move proposals forward rather than truly engaging in a meaningful analysis of equitable impacts. Another pattern that I noticed was, given that the Equity Index and the Equity Note were created at the same time and ideally intended to be used as resources supporting one another, many staff felt unsure how to connect these two resources. They aren't exactly sure how to report the indicators or the community outcomes that they're seeing, or how this can be considered in their policy development. Another piece of feedback I got, especially from staff who are the authors of equity notes, is that they want just a basic, stronger understanding of how day-to-day decisions impact equity. They are absolutely just wildly impressive employees in Pierce County. Through the internship program, I was able to look at all of these different departments, all of these different scopes of work, and see that we have some amazing resources in the county. But we can't expect everyone to be experts on equity. And so they want to be able to approach these equity notes with a meaningful and intentional background. And just as well, another concern that some people noted is that when they are limited in terms of alternatives based on perhaps a statutory requirement that they are responding to, or a constituent request where the answer is just yes or no, they're unsure how to approach the equity note because they don't feel that the policy and the decisions are coming from themselves, or that they can meaningfully explain that. They're just responding to an obligation. Next slide, please. So after receiving all of this feedback, I was able to develop some recommendations. I organized them into three categories of content, training, and process. And in this order, this would also reflect the level of effort, resources, or time that it might take to implement any of these recommendations. Content, of course, being the easiest, because all it would take is little changes in language or perhaps the order of questions to better improve the flow of the equity note and just make it make more logical sense. Whereas training the staff in certain ways or making alterations to the process on the whole would be a more involved endeavor. Next slide, please. So when it comes to my recommendations for content, one pattern that I noticed pretty much immediately was this positive language when we're discussing the target populations, being that who is benefiting from this proposal? And while, of course, we want to know what these impacts are going to be and how they are going to be helping the people of Pierce County, it's also true that we want to be acknowledging whatever adverse impacts there could be. Many of you indicated to me that this is one of the most valuable parts of the equity note to you, that you want to know what unintended consequences might be inflicted upon the community, especially in historically marginalized populations. And so I would recommend changing some of this language from just the positive benefit to impacted, to offer a more neutral prompt, or including all three of those words, impacted, benefited, or burdened by, so we're considering the whole scope of who is going to be affected. Another recommendation I have is to explicitly call upon the Equity Index in the questions. While the Equity Index does exist as a dropdown option in the data section, asking what data did you use to inform this proposal? I think that there should be its own question for the Equity Index to really prompt staff to engage with it. So they could ask something like, does the Equity Index have data relevant to this proposal? And if it doesn't, they could maybe say what data is missing, what would be relevant or useful. And in this way, we could continue building the Equity Index with relevant indicators that the staff would be asking for. When it comes to statutory requirements, I thought it would be nice to include an option for staff to acknowledge this discomfort that they were expressing to me, where they can identify the limitations that they're working within. And that removes some of the burden from themselves. It allows them to maybe identify some of the unintended consequences that they might be hesitant to if they're feeling like they have to take on that responsibility themselves. Instead, they can say, I'm working within the obligations of this statutory requirement. And then they can acknowledge what root causes might be contributing to these inequities. And then they can acknowledge what root causes might be contributing to these inequities. As a result, then we could have a pattern perhaps of saying, you know what, maybe these codes are continuously getting in the way of progress. Maybe this is something we are looking at. Identifying these patterns of limitations that staff are facing. And just another easy one, I would say move the target population section to the beginning. As I said, you indicated that this is an important part to you. You want to know who specifically, what communities in Pierce County are being impacted by each policy. And so moving the target population section to the beginning was very common across the other jurisdictions that I was studying. And it allows us to have this analysis in mind as we fill out each of the successive sections in the equity note. Next slide, please. For staff training, I recommended a couple options for how we can help staff be better equipped to fill out the equity note. Rather than just handing them a form, we want to make sure that they have the tools that they need to meaningfully embed it into the process from the beginning and to reflect faithfully on it with a stronger understanding of equity. So the first training recommendation I have is to help staff establish a stronger familiarity with the Equity Index and its potential applications. Um, the Finance Department told me that we are undergoing a contract with a vendor who is updating the Equity Index. We should expect this by the end of the fiscal year. And upon receipt of this new index, I recommend strongly training the staff to help them understand how this Equity Index can be a stronger resource for them and how we can center data in this process. When we have conversations about equity, people get nervous that we are going to be prioritizing some groups over others, that some people might be forgotten. But centering the Equity Index and making sure that we are working with data-driven policy development can help us wage those concerns. The Tacoma, City of Tacoma, I was lucky enough to have conversations with them to just kind of get a better understanding of what practices they are employing since in the meetings I watched, they were largely an inspiration that we were asking a lot of questions for in uh, developing our own practices. And one thing that I found is they created a webpage highlighting examples of staff using their own Equity Index to guide policy, drawing that data and saying, this is what we're going to do based on the community outcomes we see now and what we want to affect in the future. And so having examples like that available for staff to see and use as inspiration can be so helpful in realizing this can truly have really important outcomes that we want to see. For demographic data, this was brought up by a couple council members and policy analysts in that in the target population section, we have um, an option asking, is this going to be affecting a subset of Pierce County residents? And oftentimes people do if there is a policy that is affecting a certain region of Pierce County or certain cities are going to be more affected. But they'll indicate that although there is a subset being affected, it reflects the same um, blanket Pierce County demographics, which we know are not the same city to city. We have different makeups of communities. And so just helping staff know where to find this data. I know that it is available in open Pierce County, but maybe they just don't know where to find it. And so that's a simple one, just guiding them in the right direction. And maybe even considering what other forms of demographics we want to be reflecting on in this analysis. Racial equity is of course the driving force behind many of these conversations. But we know that in Pierce County, we have so many different kinds of diversity in terms of rural areas, in terms of money and poverty, homeowners versus renters, so many different kinds of demographics that we can be looking at in each policy and how they will be impacted. I think also that all of this will be supported by helping staff to better understand common root causes of inequity and unintended consequences of policy and varying fields of work. While you might know what equity means on the whole, you might not have an idea of how each decision is impacting equitable outcomes on the community. And so staff have indicated that they would like to have this better understanding to be able to fill the equity note out in a more meaningful way. Next slide, please. For the equity note process, these are going to be more involved edits if these are what you decide to go with. But largely, the driving um, idea behind these recommendations is to work to get equity into the picture earlier. The equity note is something that's just filled out at the end of the process. Policy development has already occurred. They might have done stakeholder engagement based on their own department standards. But largely, they are just reflecting on what's already been done rather than getting into this mindset from the beginning. So that is what these um, process changes would be hoping to impact. Um, the Finance Department has a work group that is working to provide recommendations for proposal categories potentially being changed in terms of what requires an equity note and what doesn't. Well, it was expressed to me that there is definitely value in applying the same form of analysis to everything and having that blanket. It also is clear that the Pierce County staff is experiencing fatigue with these obligations. And that equity might not be a huge part of the conversation in some of the minutia that the county is involved in. And so reconsidering which proposals require the full equity note, a potential abbreviated version if it's a short timeline, or if you want just a different form of analysis for different proposal categories. Um, for instance, in my report, I talked about how constituent requests are sometimes just a yes or a no. And so maybe an equity analysis for each individual instance isn't as valuable, but you could look at the pattern of constituent requests. Who is requesting? Who knows that they can? Who are we saying yes to? What kinds of projects are we saying yes to? And analyzing these on a higher level can help us look at those patterns maybe more effectively than if we're looking at them on an individual level. Another um, resource that would be super helpful for staff is if they could create some sort of cheat sheets for themselves. Going in with the training that they would hopefully have received. Um, they could create shared resources for themselves, identifying common root causes of inequity in their own fields and looking at unintended consequences of policy um, from examples that we've seen in the past. And creating their own resources with their own expertise and collaborating. This is, I think, the most important part of the equity note that we are missing, that this is an individualized effort at the moment. Every single staff person who is filling these out is just pulling from their own brain. But if we have more resources for the staff, they will be able to be pulling from these already discussed and identified patterns that we know exist rather than just having to come up with unidentified consequences on the fly. Another, so this would basically be um, the ground floor for racial equity action plans. This was a common practice in jurisdictions that I studied. Racial equity action plans include measurable goals and objectives for equitable outcomes that you want to see in your jurisdiction. And when I say build capacity, this is a common phrase in the resources that I found. It means that while there are frameworks available that we can draw inspiration from, the work truly needs to come from what makes sense for us as a county. Our scope of work that we do and what kinds of resources we already have to be able to build upon those and come up with practices that make sense for our own needs. So building capacity in that way can start with one person who's dedicated to organizing, to figuring out what it would take to implement practices like these at the county and then building from there. Just as well, many organizations who have been involved in this work for a longer period of time, such as King County, City of Tacoma, City of Seattle, for ten plus years have been doing equity-focused work. And they have, over time, of course, built more robust structures for equity, whether those are offices, commissions, work groups, department change teams. Regardless, they have structures that are completely focused on this and it takes the heavy lifting away from the individuals that are currently carrying that burden and allows for people who are actually experts in these fields to assist them. Next slide, please. So that concludes what I included in my report. Um, every time I wrote a new paragraph, I thought about something that I forgot. Um, and so there are a lot of things I could say about this process. I think that you have laid a very strong foundation and just the fact that we are having these conversations in the first place is a step in the right direction and that we are uh, creating these resources for staff is very positive. And just like the resources that I read, it requires just an initial implementation and then reflection as we go on of how we can improve and what works for our county's needs specifically. But in terms of other things that you might want to consider that I didn't have a definitive answer for um, would be appointment resolutions. I got some varied feedback on that. We had a great example here just now um, of where that can be a source of conflict, whether we want to be looking at who is on our boards and commissions on a, on a whole level and how they're representing the Pierce County community versus looking at the individual and what demographic contributions um, they will give if they joined the board. Um, so I think that's something that you would need to continue having conversations about and what you think makes sense for the county. Um, just another little thing, calling it an equity note. Um, I think that kind of reflects how the process exists now, but maybe not how you want it to exist going forward. Because the note reflects how it is now, which is that it's just something you tack on at the end. I understand that in the initial formulation, this came about because we wanted to have an equity note to go along with the fiscal note, that we're considering equity just as much as we are considering how much money we're spending. However, now that we can reassess this, we realize we want to be considering equity from the beginning. We don't want it to just be a note that we're tacking on at the end. So just maybe consider renaming it. Um, and when it comes to customer satisfaction, survey demographics, Councilmember Hitchens, you brought this up to me. I think that this is also really important in seeing who is feeling heard in our government, who is able to reach out to us and who is feeling satisfied with the services they're receiving. And we can see if we are serving our residents equitably. Um, just as I said, with the um, financial work group who is um, developing recommendations for proposal categories, you would, I would recommend considering their recommendations. Um, but also maybe you want to consider a different way for deciding what gets an equity analysis and what doesn't. It's up to you. This is your project. And just as well, I got a feedback from a couple different people that said, where are the policy analysts in this? These are your experts in terms of um, policy outcomes and understanding of being able to do this research. Do you want to include them as another layer of review and a quality assessment of the equity notes? That's just something to consider. And that is all I have for you today. Next slide, please. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you so much, Mina. Um, many of us are eager to read your formal, your formal report. Um, we know you put a lot of effort into it and we're very committed to continually improving the usefulness of this project. Excellent job, excellent job summarizing your findings today. Um, before I call on my colleagues for further questions and reflections, I wanted you to know that uh, we had both uh, Gary Robinson, the Finance Director and Julie DeMuth, the Assistant Director of Finance, listening in to the conversation and your presentation this afternoon. Um, you've referenced their, their work and leadership multiple times. And you know, Julie DeMuth, um, the Assistant Director has led the project to create our equity note and has done significant work to advance this for the county. I'm certain they were listening and will be reading your final report and taking your, your thoughts and recommendations to heart. So I wanted you to know that.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments by members? Vice Chair Campbell?
Thank you. Thank you very much for your good work on this. A lot of deep dive. Um, I think you illustrated um, a good reason why we started where we were at with the uh, equity note and at this time, we collect a lot more data than we did at that time when we rolled this out. I think it's been about four years or so, uh, three years. Um, the amount of data we had then compared to now. Uh, and you just go on open Pierce County and there's just so much more available. Um, and so in big part, thanks to uh, Julie DeMuth and the Finance Department um, for putting us in that position. But I think you give us a good path forward for how we can build on the foundation that we have. So thank you for, for doing all that work and I look forward to seeing what we can put in and uh, uh, your insights are well received. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. Um, Mina, well done. Really appreciate the depth and yes, the energy was there. So you're spot on. Um, my question is about suggestions for what you came up with as not really needing an equity analysis and wondering if that's in the fine print in the report that I haven't had a chance to read yet, or you left that to someone else to think about?
Yes, so that's why I included it in the additional considerations because I don't feel that I have the expertise or experience to be making, um, I guess that's significant of a recommendation. Um, I know, and that's why I referenced the finance work group as it has members from different departments across the county who are contributing to those recommendations. And I think that they can provide better insight on what is going to be relevant.
Okay.
However, I think that um, proposal categories are just one way that you can look at it. Um, you could also look at topic area, like what it's impacting, or you could be looking at communities. If it's impacting this community, maybe we want to do this form of it's completely up to you and how you want to approach it. Um, I just wanted to acknowledge that the Finance Department is working on this.
They, and they have been continuing to work on that. I'm excited to see what the new index looks like and how we can use that more fully. Um, my second question um, is in some of your research, so one of your comments is this seemed like a check the box. Did you find anyone who really was doing the work of equity analysis earlier and fa- found a way to make that happen so it could influence the policy development?
Yes. Um, so unfortunately, just based on the amount of time I had for this project, I didn't have a lot of time to actively communicate with other jurisdictions. I reached out, but you know, people have been busy this summer, as have you all. Um, so I was able to connect with City of Tacoma and had a lot of conversations with them. Um, and like I said, with their own um, racial equity action plans and Equity Index case studies, they are able to highlight how they have taken steps um, in the beginning of policy development to incorporate data and equity analysis.
Okay, I will, I will ping them and figure out how they do that because getting upstream prior to the actual development of policy is a challenge when we don't know what's coming our way sometimes from departments, so.
Exactly. And so that was also part of the ethic of the racial equity action plans, that that is a formalized way of setting goals and having measurable objectives that we can be reflecting on. Like uh, Tyler's presentation, we have performance measures. We want to look over time how we're impacting um, these things that you have deemed important. And so having goals and measurable objectives is going to be, I think, a large part of that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other reflections, questions, or comments? Mrs. Ani, um, can you say a little bit more about an example of a racial equity plan? I, I remember my um, conversation with you. One of my reflections, this was early on in your time with us. Uh, one of my reflections is, was that um, I'm so pleased that we're utilizing this process while, while to some it's check the box. When staff gets used to knowing that policymakers will be asking questions about who benefits or who is uh, impacted, that it, it be, it will in time become second nature to staff. Oh, just like they're asking about how much something is cost and can we afford it or not? It will be getting ingrained in the staff's perspective that, oh, we, we got it, it's got to be second nature, that we have to understand um, what the racial impacts are of putting this road here or widening that road there or making that investment over there um, or not. Um, so that, so that, that's, that, that was my sense of how we get upstream is over time it becomes second nature. But I'm hearing you respond to Councilmember Kitchen and say racial equity plans are um, are a tool that we should really be looking at.
Yes, so um, the Government Alliance on Race and Equity has templates that can serve as just frameworks for how um, a jurisdiction might want to approach that. But in my report, um, which is in the packet, I don't know which page, but it's the last page of my report. It has an example of one of Tacoma Public Utilities racial equity action plans that they were kind enough to share with me. And so they have a chart basically um, with columns and rows that say what are our goals in terms of um, making sure that um, English as a second language uh, communities have access to these materials and they uh, list what the uh, performance measures are for those goals, how they will know that they're making an impact, who are the people responsible for monitoring this? that they're making an impact, who are the people responsible for monitoring this? And, um, just going forward, basically what their plan is.
Thank you for that. I'll go take a look at that example. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Merle?
Thank you. Very well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. You learned a little bit while you were here. Uh, my question pertains to, you interviewed a lot of cities. Cities have pretty tight geographic boundaries. We're talking about District One, who is, I think my biggest city is 20,000 people. Most of it is small. How do you, how is the data for using District One, which is made up of a very large portion of Caucasian white folks versus minorities which are speckled throughout District One? They're not usually clustered in one area. So when you talk about, you know, racial e- e- equity within a unincorporated area, h- how does your metrics work on something like that?
That's a great question. Um, so I would probably turn to the Equity Index. Um, this is something that we have created as a resource to see what equity looks like in different areas that we are, uh, dedicated to as a county. So livability, accessibility, um, health, I'm, I'm forgetting all of the, and then they have sub-indicators within those. And you can, um, kind of, you can populate that data based on not just racial demographics, but, um, as I said, like English as a second language, um, homeownership, um, is the cost of living more than 200% of the poverty level? Um, so all of these different indicators exist within, um, that resource. And so that's why I want to build it up so that people can understand if we're not just interested in looking at race, for instance, if we have cities that are maybe not as diverse or, um, policies where race wasn't necessarily the underlying focus, then they can understand what are the different demographics that we are interested in looking at? And, um, how, what are the ones that we have already identified? And what can we continue to, uh, identify and look towards? As I said, with, um, asking that question specifically about the Equity Index would allow staff to say, you know what, if I want to do a real equity analysis, these are the things that I want to be looking at, but they're not available to me in the Equity Index or open Pierce County. So maybe we want to look at how we can procure that data.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Thanks for that question. Councilmember Hoover?
Th- thank you, Chair. Thank you for your thorough presentation. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I was wondering, you had mentioned GARE or GAR?
Mm-hmm.
And you had heard that used in one of the present, in one of the meetings earlier and whatnot. I'm wondering, is that the only foundation or nonprofit that you use for reference in the scheme of this?
No, no, it's not. It was just the main one because when I'm looking through the materials of all the jurisdictions that I was studying, it was pretty much always referenced. Um, and it's also one that we are, I believe, a member, um, of as a.
We are?
Um, I mean, the, when I looked on the map, there were dots in Pierce County, like the, um, Pierce County Library System, for instance. Um, and lots of cities within Pierce County are members of the GARE organization. Um, so this is, this was just the main example, I would say. But I also was looking at, um, the equity frameworks, for instance, that, um, the Puget Sound Regional Council used. Um, I was looking at the municipal resources, all of these, a lot of different, um, non-governmental organizations.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Well, Mina, thank you. We're looking forward to using your work. Um, I'll ask, uh, in terms of next steps, ask Mr. Taylor to either delegate to someone or, um, speak with her Chief of Staff when she's back, uh, and work with Ms. DeMuth, um, in some timeline that makes sense to absorb the information we got from Ms. Assani and figure out, uh, what we can do with it, um, and how we can further, uh, improve our process. Vice Chair Campbell?
Thank you for, for laying out those next steps. Um, as far as timeline, I would hope that, uh, since next year is a budget development year, that any changes to the process that we look to conclude by the, um, end of first quarter or middle of second quarter, uh, of next year, so that the Executive's Office can have this process available and ready as they begin budget, uh, preparation. Also, finance will begin to get so busy through the last half of the year that, uh, um, perhaps work even in fourth quarter this year, first quarter next year, um, would work on their timeline best. Thank you, Chair.
That request? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any, do any other members have a, any other business for the study session? Let's see, any, Ms. Long, any other business?
We did. Thank you.
Um, we do have a closed session, um, for members' information. Uh, if your calendar is anything like mine, I see multiple links in my calendar for the closed session. I'm going to draw members' attention to the Zoom link. So please do not use the Microsoft Teams links that are likely on your calendar. Please use the Zoom link sent by Mr. Dominique before we started this meeting. Um, so, uh, we'll just, we'll, we'll move into our, we'll take about a five-minute transition to get to our offices and please use the Zoom link that is on your Outlook calendar. Vice Chair Campbell?
I think you just covered it there. We're not meaning here, you're sending us all back to our rooms to me.
We are going to our offices to use Zoom and there'll be, uh, multiple staff, uh, joining us.
Thank you.
With no other business before the Pierce County Council and Tuesday study session, we are adjourned.